Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Present.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first on our agenda is a presentation of possible action on the first reading of ordinance 1193 approving the final adjustments for our 2016 budget and to request a public hearing for the ordinance for July 5th, Mr. Wells and Mrs. Kenny. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Almost said good evening, now good morning, Mayor and Council. And the ordinance that you have before you, probably you have before you, is just simply making adjustments that Jason and I determined needed to be made to the budget because of the overspending in one fund, and that was the Riverview Commons. It's quite often that we have several adjustments, so we kind of lucked out this year, there was just one, it was for $16,000, and it's just the amount that they have us paying out. And of course, you know that adjustments are because of differences in expenses, not in revenue, so that doesn't necessarily mean that that account went over in any way. So, we just need a resolution to approve and then set it for, what do we need?
July 5th.
A meeting next, an approval next time. July 5th, yeah, right after. Okay, so that's all that is.
Are there any questions? I would entertain the action.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on first reading of ordinance number 1193 approving final adjustments to the 2016 budget and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for July 5th.
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Jean. And next we have presentation of the 2016 draft financial audit. A little late reading? I'm assuming. I'm assuming we have time to review this.
Yes. You're gonna have tanks in a day.
That's two weeks in a day. Thank you.
Real.
Okay, this is just the first draft copy of the audit, and you know, just recently received and very hot off the presses. So, our auditor did ask me to let you know that it was going to be, they still have more review to do, and I obviously have more review to do, since I just kind of received it. And then, when they come back to you, they will likely have another, unless if this is perfect, which, you know, most of the time things aren't. But there will be another one of these, and it will be a second draft. And then, once that is approved and okayed by everyone, then we will get the final nice copy of the audit a few days later from them. But if at any time in looking at this and proofing it closely, if you have any questions, sure, get in touch with Jeff or me, and we will, there could be things that aren't right, you know, and it's fine if you guys find them, we'd prefer to.
When we get the second draft, is there any way that we can get like a cheat sheet that tells us what changed, so we don't have to go from beginning to end of the whole document?
Certainly, I can highlight the changes for you on your copies.
And even, yeah.
And then, copy it after on our fancy color copier. I can go through one, because I'll want to do that anyway, to see what's different. So, sure. Okay?
Thanks. Next, we have a presentation of possible action on a request for in-kind services and fee waives for Bob Stock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sure you're all familiar with Bob Stock, and Mediologic has requested in-kind services and the waiver of fees. The only difference from last year is that we included the five three-yard containers, and they will be dumped more frequently. So, that comes to 410, which I don't think was included last year. And then also, the fee for reserving the City Park gazebo for two days. Other than that, all the fees are the same as last year and equals $7,860.05.
Any questions?
So, I wish Josh was here, too, because we've been talking for months about regulating and figuring out what in-kind services look like for any group. So, I think Bob Stock is a great event, it's a really great community event, but I just want to make sure, I just wanted to ask if your department and Josh, if you've been...
We're working on it. The total in-kind services policy is still under review and trying to determine what's going to make the most sense. So, we're working on that, and we'll have that back to council probably in the next three to six months, so.
But I love that, yeah, the city can collaborate with Mediologic on this event. Yeah, it looks good to me, but I just wanted to follow up with that.
Appreciate it. So, who's singing this? Are you singing this year?
Wayne is, I heard Wayne is singing.
Wayne, are you singing this year?
Alvarado, right.
We have very few changes. I think the only thing that you didn't have in your packet that we're going to do, Touchstone Industries is bringing their big hot air balloon down.
Cool.
They're going to do tethered rides, hopefully, and a glow at night. But everything else, almost exactly the way we've done it for the last two years since we got the band shells, so, been good. Any questions?
Rock on.
Got to get a V.I.P. pass for somebody, which means nothing, but it makes him feel good.
You know, I'm always impressed with Mediologic, anytime there's your request, you have people show up and come and talk about it and share about it, and that's not always the case with some of the in-kind requests that come through to us. So, appreciate that and respect you for coming to council.
Well, and while we have the time, I just appreciate how much effort you put into organizing this every year and everything, and it ends up being such a good community event. I mean, it brings so many people to this, to Fort Morgan and everything, so that it gives businesses more business and customers and everything, too, so.
I was going to tell you that we got a phone call the other day from, I can't remember, Michigan or Indiana, but they're spending the 4th of July in Greeley. And they called, and Melissa was talking to them, and they asked if it was appropriate, I don't know why, but they did, if they could spend the whole weekend and actually take in the whole thing for free, and she gave them hotel room, or hotel telephone numbers and stuff like that. So, I think we're seeing, and I think that's a culmination of a lot of things, not necessarily through us, but all the bands get followed by fans, and they're starting to make trips around, and if it works out in their schedule, they come and stay and spend money in Fort Morgan that normally we wouldn't get, so that's pretty exciting, so I appreciate you.
Well, I have people coming from San Diego for it, so.
Well, I just like to thank staff and Mediologic Radio. Elizabeth does a great job in putting all this together and tracking it, and all the other departments do a great job in making sure that this comes off without a hitch. And, you know, without Mediologic Radio, this wouldn't happen. And they're sponsors and the people that really make this a community event. The community comes out, and we get people that come and see our community, and it's really something that we're proud of, and something that I know Mediologic's proud of, and they do a really good job with it, so we appreciate that, staff and our private partners that come in and make our community a better place.
Ten years. Ten years. And all of them have been pretty good.
And who was the first band you brought, who was the first headliner?
He didn't even hesitate with that, he remembered right off the bat.
That's not fading for him yet.
No.
Okay, I would entertain action.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the request for in-kind services and fee waivers for Bob Stock.
Have a resolution, do we just need a motion on this?
Resolution.
Resolution. Resolution. So, okay. By Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
We look forward to it.
We'll see you there.
Okay.
You bet.
Thanks.
Oh, sweet. Thank you.
Have a great week.
You're staying, Noah? Somebody's got to work, huh? Next, we have presentation of possible action on bids for city facility roof repairs.
Michael Boyer. Hi, good morning again. So, back in August of 2015, we had a hailstorm come through and damage a lot of the roofs. You're probably thinking, well, why haven't we got them fixed at this point? By the time we got an adjuster out here to look at all the roofs, it was winter time, and it was a no-go at that point. I drug my feet in 2016 and figured, hey, if there's more hail, I'll just wait until after this season, just add it to the mix. And I think it's working, so we haven't had any hail since 2015 that's done some significant damage. So, we went out for bid for these roof repairs. We're up against our two-year runout period with insurance, so obviously now we need to do something about it. We had three folks actually come to the required pre-bid meeting, two companies of those three put in bids. The most important thing to remember is we're on the hook for $50,000, that's our deductible, so regardless of who we go with, we're paying $50,000. One of these companies, Performance Construction, bid $100,000 for all the roofs. The other company bid $70,000. However, that's up to them and SIRSA to figure out what they're going to give them for allowances to fix these roofs. So, again, it really didn't matter, you know, who we went with. The unfortunate thing with one of these companies that I'm not going with is that they didn't submit a complete bid, so while they had the numbers to me, they didn't include, you know, their certificate of insurance, a date when they could get the roofs finished, they didn't include references that I could contact, and so I just kind of put it to the side and went forward with the company that did follow the instructions to a T. And I think that will yield better results when we actually go to put the roofs on. And then, at the end of the day, some of these roofs that the adjuster bid, they may have done some light gauge metal when it's actually a heavier roof, so they'll replace like for like at the end of the day, so we shouldn't have any problems getting our roofs back to par. So, with your permission, we'll proceed with Performance Construction. Any questions on the bid?
So, SIRSA will be the one that picks the contractor, or you've already?
You guys will pick the contractor, and then they'll work with that individual. Initially, this claim affected a lot of municipalities in the pool, and they thought that it would go over their limits, it would go to the reinsurance company, and that's not the case. Now that we're coming to the end, SIRSA's going to take care of all the payments and work directly with the people that we pick. But yeah, it's totally up to you all to decide on who you want to go forward with. I'm recommending Performance Construction due to the fact that they had a complete bid. We're on the hook for $50,000, both companies were over 50, and then they'll work with SIRSA to figure out payment for the rest.
So, our resolution is just in an amount not to exceed $50,000?
That would be correct.
Or the deductible rate? Okay. So, not the actual bid?
Any other questions?
You know, I would just point out that Michael Boyer's done an exceptional job on this claim and all the other claims that he's handled here at the City of Fort Morgan. This will be his last city council meeting with us, as he's going to be over at the school district hanging out with Clint. Well, I hope not, I think if you're hanging out with Michael over there, that's probably not a good thing.
Not a good thing, I try to avoid that.
But I just want to express my appreciation and thanks to Michael for the last six years and all the hard work that he's done for the City of Fort Morgan. He's an exceptional in-person employee and has done a great job for our employees and for the city, so we'll miss him. But he's not going far, and Clint, you won't miss him. He'll be right there, watching every move.
Yeah, you need to watch him.
Thank you. And the building department will take it from here, they'll work with the chosen contractor and make sure all the roofs are good to go.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution in accepting the bid from Performance Construction in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second. Resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Christine Casto, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
I want to second his sentiments, Michael, you've been a, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and we'll see you up at the hill.
Come visit us.
Next, we have presentation on bids for chlorine scrubber replacement at the water treatment plant, Mr. O'Conne.
Morning, Council, morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
All right, so I believe you guys all had a copy of the memo I sent out on the scrubber, giving you a little bit of description about what the scrubber does. It's a very vital piece of equipment out there when it comes to safety, it's one of our largest pieces of equipment that we have on site. Because we disinfect with chlorine, both pre, in the forward part of the plant and also at the end, we do store one-ton chlorine, one-ton chlorine cylinders on site, and because of that, we're required to maintain and have ready a chlorine scrubber. This chlorine scrubber actually holds 3,000 gallons of caustic, or sodium hydroxide. If you're familiar, on the pH scale, it's a 14, it's alkaline. So, if you get it on your skin, it tends to burn, it's not very good, it's very hazardous, so we're using one hazardous chemical to neutralize another hazardous chemical. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get away from that. The caustic needs to be replaced every five years, we're coming up on that five-year mark where it needs to be replaced, plus the equipment's 20 years old. I did contact other water treatment plants, such as Fountain Valley Water Authority and also Carter Lake, they had the similar scrubber that we have, the caustic scrubber. After about 20 years, that tank does start to degrade itself, so it starts, they had problems with their tanks after 20 years. I think Carter Lake actually got 26 years out of their tank. So, we're looking at an aging tank that's holding the scrubber, plus we just want to get away from the hazardous chemical. Anytime we have to remove that every five years, we're having to have hazmat truck come in, haul the equipment, haul the caustic off. Roughly, we're looking at around $10,000 every time we do that. Over a 20-year period, we'd probably cut that cost in half, having to haul that off. The dry media scrubber, it's safe, it's inert, if it does, if it ever is used, we just take that top portion of that media, that dry media, and throw it in a dumpster. It's safe to land-apply, you know, at a landfill, so there's no hazardous material there. As far as equipment, we still got to test our sensors, but we're not having to deal with the hazardous material. Let me see, no more aging caustic. Let me see. Basically, testing the media wouldn't be quarterly, it'd be more annually on the dry, on the dry media, so. Originally, last year, when we looked at the system, we were actually looking at just retrofitting, so converting the existing scrubber tank into a dry scrubber. When we went out for bid, the bids actually came back pretty close to 250,000 to 270,000 to convert, actually for a brand-new system. Let me see, we did go out for bid last year in April, sorry, here, April 17th. We had bid openings on May 25th, you'll see there, we had two contractors that did apply or did bid for this equipment. Replacement from Aslan was 366,259, the conversion was 274,362. Velocity Constructors was 250 for replacement, 250,127, and then the conversion was 19942. So, with that, Council staff at the water treatment plant is requesting that, with Council's permission, that we choose Velocity Constructors for a new system. You have any questions? Chlorine scrubber, wet or dry, caustic?
No.
Well, it seems like a great move. Thanks for doing your research and, yeah, calling those other facilities. My question was just about, what does the process look like when you're changing out the systems? Like, does it affect what happens at the plant with? I'm just super newbie, so I'm just wondering, yeah, with your current process, when they're switching things out, does it, like, hurt with what?
Put the plant, are we, I think what you're trying to ask is, does it put the plant at risk while we're in mid-conversion between?
Unfortunately, it does. We tried to look in to see, okay, what are we going to do in the meantime when they're converting the wet to the dry scrubber? It would cost quite a bit of money to have a portable system on site, we're just going to be without for the time being. I think they said maybe 10 days in between having one scrubber tore down and removed, and then the next one installed? Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're without. If this scrubber was to ever fail, that's an important thing to know, because if it ever fails, if it fails to run, something happens, we are actually, we maintain a two-mile radius around the plant of all the residents in that area, because chlorine does expand 460 times, and it is two and a half times heavier than air, so it's going to settle down low, so we do monitor that two-mile radius around the plant, and we do have reverse 9-1 to evacuate the area. So, that's why it's critical to keep up to date on what we have there, so.
And I'm assuming we've never had the usage?
No, ma'am, no.
Top-notch operators.
Yes, yes, that's right.
You know, that chlorine is actually contained in its own storage room, so it's contained separate from the plant, there's sensors down low, like I said, it's heavier than air, so the sensors are down low, it's contained in its own room, it's separate from the other plant, so you only have access from the outside. So, if there is a release, hopefully it stays in that room, that chlorine scrubber kicks in and does its job.
I have one, we all know what the obvious question here is, but first of all, I wanted to say thank you, I think that your memo was very well explained, it helps us to understand a very intangible subject that, other than Ron, the rest of us are probably going, scrubber, okay. But is the, is just that velocity is, I always look at how come one bid is, I mean, so much more expensive? Is it because they didn't understand the bid, maybe, or is it?
You know, currently Velocity has, they're actually doing work here in Fort Morgan at the wastewater plant, so they've already got a contract here, that might be the deal.
More knowledge.
Uh-huh.
Knowledge of the community.
Over the station.
Yeah.
True. Okay.
I did, we did contact Velocity because the bid came in, originally we were looking at 250,000 to 270,000 just to retrofit or squeeze that dry solution into that wet caustic system. So, that's why we had 300,000 just for a cushion, but when they came back at 250,000, they actually have, they want to replace the whole system. Electrical panel and the scrubber itself, it'll still, it'll actually fit into that room that it's housed in, so.
Good deal.
With that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution to accept the bid from Velocity Constructors Incorporated in an amount of $250,127 for the replacement of the chlorine scrubber to be used at the water treatment plant.
Second. A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Appreciate it.
Well done, sir.
Next, we have a presentation of possible action on bids for wastewater collection system relining project, Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, main replacement is kind of a big thing for a good O&amp;M project, and currently, the way we're doing our sewer main replacements is we're just kind of doing spot repairs and small sections where we can get in to access these areas through excavation. Unfortunately, with sewer lines, they tend to be anywhere from eight to 15 feet deep, so it usually requires a very large excavation in order to gain access to the pipe. But unfortunately, there are some areas in town where we do not have access, or very, very minimal access, especially for just our regular cleaning and O&amp;M projects. These areas, we've dubbed easement areas, and basically what they are is areas that don't have alley access. These areas, we have very, very limited access with the equipment, we had to get special equipment just to gain access to these. Manholes are actually located in people's backyards, so we have to go through fences, drive through their yards in order to gain access, and these areas have also been dubbed kind of high-risk areas, high-maintenance areas, because they tend to have a lot of trees growing over them, and those trees, those roots go down into those clay lines, plugging them up, and then they usually have a lot of heavy grease and everything as well, which doesn't take long before those lines can back up, so they require a lot of extra maintenance on them, and of course, with our limited access, it makes it very difficult. We've looked at doing different ways to replace these lines going through there, because they are aging lines, most of them, especially in the south of the tracks, a lot of them were put in in the early 50s, 60s, and so they've got a lot of root growth, we have to do a lot of root cutting in them. We've looked at full replacement excavation, well, unfortunately, we'd have to tear sheds down, fences down, go through people's backyards, and it's a lot of hassle for the customer, something we don't want to do to them if we don't have to. We also looked at another means, which was pipe bursting, but unfortunately, pipe bursting still requires excavation in order to reconnect the customer's taps into the mains. So, the only other alternative that we've really found is a cure-in-place pipe, which basically, it's a liner that goes inside of the existing pipe, so it uses the pipe, it sleeves it in, and then they basically balloon it out, and then cure it in place, and it becomes your new pipe. And basically, the way these, the technology, it makes the pipe stronger than the existing pipe, so actually, the clay can crumble around it, and you're going to have a brand-new, almost like a PVC main running through there. We've done, contacted a lot of different places, actually, last year we looked at the pipe bursting, and that's when we kind of started really shifting our search into some other means, and this was kind of the best way. There's two different methods for it, there's, well, there are two different liners, basically, there's a felt liner, and then there is a fiberglass liner, and I've looked into both of them, and it looks like the fiberglass liner is actually the better route to go, just because it's less curing time before the main can go back online, so that's less hassle to the customer, and it also doesn't have any hazardous chemical through the curing process, there's no runoff from that, it uses UV light in order to do it, so it's a lot faster and safer. So, we are looking at doing these easement areas right now, this is kind of a new thing for us, we've never done this before, so we're kind of doing a trial run this year on one of our really high-maintenance lines, it's in the Gateway Cove area. It's an area that we have to jet usually multiple times a year, and it's very, very hard to get into the backyards of these people's houses in order to check the main and to access it for cleaning. So, we're going to try it on this line and see how it goes, and if it's something that works really well, it's something we're hoping to kind of incorporate more often, start doing a lot of these easement area mains, getting them kind of back to more of a functional state than they are right now. So, we had an invitation to bid was placed on the city's website on May 23rd and made available at City Hall, there is no pre-bid meeting on this one. Bids were due on the 12th of June, and we did have two companies submit a bid, CNL Solutions, and their total was $150,655, and then we had Lane Inliner, which their total was $207,200. We, the staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from CNL Solutions in the amount not to exceed $160,000 to complete the 2017 wastewater collection relining projects. Are there any questions?
Yeah, you were talking about one solution, you still have to go in and hook up taps and everything, if you put in a liner like that, how do you make the opening for the existing taps?
Yeah, I was going to mention that. What they actually do is they come in, the company that we bring in, they'll come in and they'll do a heavy cleaning of the line, get it as close to the original inside diameter as they can, cleaning the roots and whatever else, and then they will go in and they camera and they measure everything, I think they laser measure it and everything to get the exact location of all the taps. Once the liner is in place and it's cured, then they will send a little cutter down through there, and it actually goes through and it cuts all of the taps back out. And then the, this method we're looking with, with this company, they will actually then insert an additional liner up into the customer's service, it extends up to about three feet into the customer's service, which will then also inhibit the root growth coming from the customer's taps, because that's where a lot of our root growth comes from, is where they break in these taps. of our root growth comes from, is where they break in these taps. The roots grow around the tap where they slid the pipe into the main, and then that's where we get our problems. So they will put these liners in, which will then, at least it'll improve the customer's tap for one, and then it'll also inhibit that growth coming in from those taps. It's not going to stop it completely, but it will at least inhibit it and slow it down. So, so, yeah, it's pretty neat technology, the way they do it, and everything is all robotics.
I wonder if you had to train little moles to go in with a hunting torch or what?
Okay. That's the next thing.
I'd point out that this is, this is some innovative thinking on the part of our employees to come up with a way to make it better for the customer, less expensive than digging up a yard, making it work well, and trying to find a way to make, look out at the technology that's available to make this work, and I think it, again, we have a lot of innovation that's going on, and it's getting better, and we've got our committee coming out here in about a month to kind of talk about where we're going with all the innovation stuff. But one of the things that we've highlighted in our process is that we do have innovative ideas that are constantly moving forward, so, thanks, Eric, appreciate that.
Thank you.
What would it cost if, just a ballpark, if we didn't do this liner, if we were going to have to go in and actually do the work you're saying to replace it? I mean, are we talking four times that?
I would say probably pretty close to that, and of course, we would have to inconvenience people a lot, because there have been a lot of times people have built their fences, their sheds, their garages, right over the top of these mains, so we would have to either figure out how to do it without tearing their garage down, or have them move their stuff. So, yeah, the cost would go up very quickly.
What is the life expectancy of, to replace the line? I know on the packet it mentions this should last about 50 years.
Yeah, they've, this is still kind of a new technology, so I think the longest that these liners have been in place have been up to around 30 years. Not in the U.S. U.S. has kind of just really started using this within the last 15 to 20 years. So they're only looking at about 30 years right now of actually in place being used. But they've projected that the average sewer line is supposed to only last about 50 years. So they've tried to engineer these to last a minimum of 50 years, so there's no guarantees on that, but, you know, it's, that's kind of what they're looking at.
So to replace it, to go through all of that trouble, the hassle, and spend all that extra money, what is the life expectancy to replace the line as opposed to put this, the liner in?
Well, it would depend on the conditions, of course, but, I mean, I mean, these clay lines, some of them have been in for over 100 years, and they're still going, but, you know, it depends entirely on condition, both the soil and the growth around it, the, you know, whether there's heavy traffic that causes any kind of vibrations that can cause pipes to sag, whether it was installed poorly. So, I mean, the lines can last a long time if you were to install a brand-new line, and these could as well, so it's all, just kind of depends on where it's at and how it's being used, so.
Okay, thank you. And how long is the line?
How long is the line?
Yeah.
This stretch in through here is just over 1,000 feet on this one. On average, I mean, we try and do, it's roughly 600 feet between manholes is what we're, we try and do, and the way they do this, this work is it's manhole-to-manhole type of thing. They can, that's why there's no excavation required, so we're looking at 600 to 800-foot stretches, just depending on the area that it's at, but this particular line is just over 1,000 feet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from CNL Solutions in an amount not to exceed $160,000 to complete the 2017 wastewater collection system relining projects A and B.
Second.
A resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a presentation of possible action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a development agreement with Morgan Lodging LLC. Mr. Miller.
Well, I'll get this really quick. We have with us today a guest, the developer, Mr. Patel. Obviously, for your consideration, is an agreement that outlines some of the development requirements, as well as any incentives associated with the development. They've started moving dirt already, and they're ready to move forward, and so Mr. Patel's here today to let you know a little bit about the project and, you know, say thanks to council for their efforts to help the business move, make this project happen. So, Mr. Patel, I'll turn it over to you for just a minute.
Morning. My name is Kalpech. I am here representing Morgan Lodging and its partners. So this project has been a long time coming for us. It's been in the pipeline for a good six, seven years, and finally, it's getting off the ground, so we're going to be here. I want to be here and thank the council and members of the city staff to work with us to putting this development agreement together. We're excited to get this off the ground and look forward to working with the city and the community and being a positive impact to the community. So with that, any questions?
My question was going to be, when we're going to break ground, but, so you've already broke ground?
Yes, we are moving dirt right now, as we speak.
Fantastic. Well.
Well, I think we're all hoping that we can help fill your hotels that the city of Fort Morgan will be a great place for the hotel to be.
Yep, and we're excited, like I said, so, thank you.
And we'll get some ancillary buildings in there also.
Not at this point, but we look at other options right next to us as well, but we haven't decided on anything yet.
Good. I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an improvements agreement with Morgan Lodging LLC.
Second.
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for selecting our community for your hotel.
Next, we have a presentation of possible action calling for a general election to be held in conjunction with the November 7th, 2017 Morgan County Coordinated Election, and approval of a draft 2017 election calendar. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, your honor. This is just a resolution setting the election. It doesn't have anything to do with what will be on the ballot or anything like that. It simply says that we will have our municipal election on November 7th and coordinate it with the county, and follow the uniform election code instead of the municipal election code, because we are coordinating, and that I will certify the ballot content to the county clerk by September 8th, and it authorizes the mayor to sign the IGA that will, the county says will get within about five days after we pass this resolution.
Yeah, I got one question, John. When, we've been talking about potentially having a 1% tax increase. I was looking at the calendar, and did I miss where on here would be the last date that we would have to add a ballot measure for something like that?
We have talked about playing it a little safe and doing it on August 15th, I think, but August is a five Tuesday month, and we could buy ourselves an extra three weeks of promoting this ballot measure on which we have not taken any formal action.
Put that in.
And if we waited until the first meeting in September, we would have, be able to do it, I think it's September 5th, and then certify the ballot content by the 8th. So that'd be cutting it pretty close. We still have to discuss that, but that would be some valuable time that we could buy ourselves.
And this has nothing to do with the contents of the ballot?
No, this is just calling for the election and how we're going to work, as we always have, work with the county, be on their coordinated ballot.
And regardless of that, we would have to have an election, because it's a council election year, so.
Correct, yeah, we're having one anyway.
Okay, thank you.
I would entertain action.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution calling for the general municipal election to be held in conjunction with the November 7th, 2017 Morgan County Coordinated Election, and the approval of the draft for 2017 election calendar.
Second.
A resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
We're both lying.
Next, we have a presentation and survey results from the party in the park and plans for ballot issued committee. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, your honor. This was the survey we took at the first party in the park on June 8th. The main question on it was about the 1% sales tax ballot question, and a couple of very encouraging things came out of the results, as you can see. And this is not a scientific survey, and it's no guarantee of anything, but 80% of people said they would support the 1% sales tax if it was designated for streets. The comments that you see on the summary are mainly from people who said no, but 80% said yes, and that was very encouraging. The other really encouraging thing is, we asked people if they'd be willing to participate in a committee or a group to help promote and advocate for the passage of this 1% sales tax, and I would not have been surprised if we got no volunteers, but we actually got nine, and so we're in the process now. Some of them, unfortunately, just gave us a name, some, a name and address, no phone number or email address. Some of us, you know, we got more information. So Jill is currently working on, you know, developing, getting in contact with these people, and we expect to have our first meeting of that group next week, and so we'll start, you know, kind of pulling together, educating them so they can educate others about the need for this, and how we're going to go about promoting it. There's any number of different ways, and we're going to try them all and try and get this thing through.
Another very positive note with regard to this is that one of our local businesses, McAtee, that owns Green Brothers, has contacted us, and they're very interested in helping promote this move forward as well. They see this as an important aspect of development of the community, and obviously, they have an interest, because it's a business, it's local, that would benefit from the tax. It would help their, them to help us, you know, get our streets looking better. You know, one of the other interesting things about the comments that I got out of it was, out of the survey, was that people are also interested in the alleys being developed out and fixed up and done, and that definitely can be included as part of the work that we do, and as part of the ballot measure that could be used on streets and right-of-way improvements, whether it's alleys or anything else. So I think it was really good to hear back from the citizens on what they really would like to see done with this money, and very good news to hear that, while it is not scientific, but it demonstrates that, you know, at least 80% that came to the park to eat hamburgers were in favor of it. So I think that's a very good sign for us in moving forward, and with the number of people that have come out and want to be a part of this, it's obviously important to the community that the streets get fixed, and it sounds like we're going to have a group of people that can carry the banner after we hand it off to them in August. So it's very good news.
All right. Thanks, John.
Next is the consent agenda by resolution. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, your honor. Today's consent agenda includes item A, approval of the disbursements in payroll for May, and item B, approval of the minutes of the June 6, 2017 city council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the approval of the disbursement and payroll for May and the approval of the minutes from the June 6, 2017 city council regular meeting.
Second.
A resolution by Christine Casto, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment and audience participation for items not on the agenda. Mr. Mule.
I just came to see my last council meeting.
And so glad we are.
Oh, you're going to make us all sad.
He's not sad.
He's going to make us sad.
Oh, he's going to make us sad. I bet he's ready to do the happy dance.
He's going to have a happy dance.
You guys don't need an introduction, but I wanted to make sure Mike had an opportunity to come in and speak in front of you, because I think, as all of you are aware, Friday is his last day on the job. Well, maybe three weeks ago was your last day actually working, but, no. So, he's been, he's been working with, we're going to, just so you guys are aware, we're going to put Skip in as interim superintendent, and so he's been working with Skip and getting all that training necessary, so as he leaves, we can have kind of a seamless transition over. But I've been Mike's supervisor now for four and a half years, and he has definitely made it easy on me, knowing that that plant out there was in good hands. He's been with the city for 26 years. That just speaks volumes. That's, in my mind, is an unbelievable number, and so it says a lot about Mike and, you know, working for the city and everything. So we wanted to give him an opportunity. I think it's great that his guys all came here, wanted to support him as his last hurrah here in front of council, so.
They want us to board him?
I know you want to have a lot to say, but, you know.
No, I know you guys are leaving, so I would like to offer a resolution that June 23rd, 2017 is Michael Hecker's last day with the city of Fort Morgan.
I thought it was going to be my last day.
Vote by roll call, please.
Write that down.
Oh, I'm sorry, I took that off.
June 23rd, Michael Hecker day.
Actually, I just wanted to say, oh, go right ahead.
It would really mean a lot to Mr. Hecker if the city council could designate him as emperor of Fort Morgan for 15 minutes.
We can give him the rest of the day, right?
You don't want to be little emperor. You remember that, Mike.
Actually, I just wanted to come and say thank you for everything the city's done, not only for me, but my entire family. Ron knows, Ron was sitting there when I walked in. February 18th, 1991, in a overloaded, trickling plant with the EPA breathing down our necks. My first job with the city was climbing in the void of the anaerobic digester lid, cleaning out dried sludge, so. Why I stayed 26 years, I have no.
To make sure you wanted to do it.
Actually, I came here for a job, and it turned into a career and a hometown. My daughter was born here, both kids went to school through here, both went to MCC, so it's bittersweet, but I want to thank the council for every time I came up here, knowing how important wastewater is, even though you don't see us and hopefully don't smell us. When, like I said, my first foreman was Ron, I want to thank Ron for kind of taking me under his wing when I first came here.
It was a pleasure working with you.
I want to thank Mr. Wells. I think you have an outstanding city manager. He was my first boss when I became superintendent, before Brent came. You have a great staff. I want to thank Brent, who's been an outstanding boss, even though he shies away from getting his hands dirty. It's only poop, Brent, it's only poop.
That's why he's the director, he doesn't have to do that.
But it's been great. We have no set plans, we're kind of fluid, but I just wanted to say thanks to the city and the council and everybody in it. You have a great crew, you have a great city, and I want to thank, and I want to let you know that it's not going to miss a beat out here. All but one showed up. You know Skip, and Jason, and Dave, and Victor, they came here just to show you it's not going to miss a beat, it's just going to keep going on. You know, it has to, because there's a thing called gravity, and even if we wanted to stop it, we can't. So any questions?
I thought maybe they were here to make sure you didn't back out.
Well, we're still teaching, we're still working on the DMRC today, so.
We're going to miss you, Mike. It's, you know, in the years that I've been on council, you know, it's been a pleasure. You make the wastewater treatment plant someplace that, you make it interesting. I mean, a lot of people could shy away, and it's not the glamorous side of the water, you know, but I think, you know, you've just been such, especially for new council members when I came in, so patient, helping us understand and learn about what it is that goes on in your department. about what it is that goes on in your department. And personally, I can't thank you enough for helping me learn as quickly as I needed to learn. So we're going to thank you.
Well, you know, Mike has not always been outgoing. At one point in time, he was kind of quiet and removed. Don't know what happened.
I refuse to believe that.
He drank the water of Billy.
Water. That's another thing. Thank you very much, councils in the past, for getting good water. When I moved here and I was told I had to haul water, my wife, we moved from Loveland. My wife said, where did you move me to?
Me too. I came from Denver, and I'm like, what?
So anyway, I like that it's, you're progressive, like the water. You thought a long time ago about water. Now you're thinking about fiber optics. And so, that's what I liked about the city, besides each and every department. I could go right now and call any department, and if they were not in an emergency, they'd drop and come help us.
Well, you're the last of the...
Last of the trickling filter crew.
Crew, yep.
You weren't going to say something like dinosaurs.
You know, one thing I think we...
We all kind of worked on the par side of things. And as a group, there was Ron Rager, Mike Dreeson, you haven't forgotten Gary yet, and myself.
I got a text from him today.
So it was, it was a pleasure working with you, Mike.
I appreciate it. Thanks for everything.
We look forward to working with Skip now.
Yep.
So you got to keep it entertaining to fill those booths.
He will.
We need animal stories because...
We did have a duck story. We had a duck that got trapped in the A-basin also. So Jason was big in the rescue of the duck. We had to put a plank out there so the duck would eventually climb out.
But it has a happy ending, right, the duck guy?
Oh, there's nothing but happy endings, except for the chihuahua that was found on the bar screen. I had to throw that one in.
That is my, well, not my favorite, but that's one of my favorite.
And the $50 bill that was found on the bar screen.
Fastest money ever spent, right?
That is correct. You wash it off, you go buy a pack of gum at 7-Eleven and get change.
Don't work.
You know, one thing that I think we really need to thank Mike for and his crew, you know, if you knew Gary, Gary Dreeson was very good at what he did. And Mike brought a kinder, gentler perspective to the plant. And that's saying nothing bad about Gary. Gary was very good at what he did. And Mike has really been very exceptional at considering his people. But if you, if I were to say one of his greatest accomplishments as an operator, now, he's very successful in so many other ways and accomplished as an actor and other things within the community. But, you know, we had an amazing rainstorm come through here a few years ago and took a plant that's rated for 2 million gallons up to 6. We were close to losing that plant completely. And if it wasn't for Mike and his team and Eric.
Eric's like, hey, don't forget me over here.
If we weren't, if we, if they weren't doing what they're, if they didn't have that experience and knowing what that plant could do and how to manage that, we would have lost the plant. And thanks to them, they kept it up and kept the ship afloat, if you will. So that's just one of the great things that he's done.
Ship.
The ship.
Boat?
The boat. The boat afloat. I forgot what department that was.
We would have been at Pratt Creek, right?
So anyways, I want to thank Mike personally for all that he does and for who he is. He does a great job as a manager, but that's a lot because of who he is.
And go tell Laurie thank you for hanging in there. She was a trooper.
Is she coming, is she coming on Friday?
Is this on TV? Are we being blocked? Are you coming on Friday? Yep. She's supposed to be watching. I appreciate it. So I better get down before I start crying like a baby in 26.
We'll save that for Friday.
Yeah, we can make you cry. That's my goal on Friday, is make you cry.
I just want to thank and have fun up in the mountains and do good for Fort Morgan.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure, bud.
See you Friday.
Thank you. Good, good, good.
Good job. Okay, our reports from officials and staff.
Just a couple of really quick reports. We're very happy to announce that we are very close to having a functional dump station for RVs within the city. Brent and...
I think we should rename it.
Yes, the Mike Hecker.
Hecker Dump Station.
Yes, Hecker Dump Station.
The Mike Hecker Trailer Dump. We could. We could put a sign out there.
The perfect name for that, if you've ever looked at Mike's signature, we always called him Mule Hill. That's exactly what it looks like.
The Mule Hill?
Mule Hill Dump Station.
He'll know what it means.
He'll know exactly what it means. So will Gary.
Put that on a piece of paper.
We have a big design for it, so.
We can do whatever you want.
Mule Hill. Can we make a motion for that?
So it's located just south of the senior center in the parking lot there. I know we've had people for several years wanting to know where they could dump that in the city. And obviously, we don't want it in the storm drains. We don't want Cousin Eddie pulling up and doing his thing. We have a place where they can take care of that. And want to thank Brent and Eric and their crews for really putting that together.
So in the community, in, so in, why can't I think of the name of that building? Where do you, well, no, it's, so when, so they'll have to pull into our parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, they will pull into the parking lot as though you're going to the complex. And then it's just almost up to the railroad tracks or the edge of our parking lot. Kind of out in the middle, we put nice pipe ballards around it so you can't run it over.
Is that going to be negotiable? I'm having trouble with these big words today. Negotiable with like a fifth wheel or a, okay.
Yeah, we hope that we left enough room in there so people could get it. And it's got water service there so you can wash down and everything else, so.
Mule Hill.
Last thing we got to do is put a sign on it. We want to put some of the rules and things like that. We will have it under video surveillance, so people should not feel free to use it for dumping of illegal things.
Or commercially.
Yeah, or commercially.
And you can't actually bring your mule over there, right?
Maybe. Not allowed in the city.
I'll leave that up to the police department.
Okay, the mule's just passing through.
The other thing that I have is happy to announce that we have conditional offers out to a public works director as well as an HR director. And within the next couple of months, we'll have those positions filled and be meeting new people. So really appreciate Michael and staff and everybody else for what they've done. And so, I know Brent's got one more announcement. I don't know if anybody else did.
So we have an interim for Mike's position, correct? Do we have an interim for Michael or?
Yeah, me.
Oh, like I said, do we, no, we have it.
Jennifer, Michael hired Jennifer several months ago, and she is doing an exceptional job, Jennifer Kukow. And she's doing a really good job. And so, she will be kind of the forefront in there for about a month to two months. And then we will have that position transitioned. We expect that person to be on board no later than August 15, and the public works director on by July 17, so.
Great, excellent. Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick update on the fiber. I think we've finally reached the 60,000-foot mark of conduit installation.
Wow.
So we're moving right along. We're well over halfway, kind of reaching the two-thirds mark. We have all of our crossing permits with the ditch companies now in place. CDOT has given us all their permissions. We're just waiting on the last approvals from the railroad to cross the railroad. So we've got pretty much everything in place. Those guys continue just to flat move. We are months ahead of schedule from where I thought we were going to be when we originally met with some of the contractors on this project. So moving along very well. We will probably start doing fiber installation within the next two weeks. So once we start pulling fiber, like I said before, we'll set something up and have a little bit of a ribbon cutting ceremony on that and everything, so.
The fiber cutting?
A fiber cutting. Yeah, we've had that discussion about what we can and can't cut, so.
So is fiber what we're doing, or I guess I assume it's us, on Saunders right at the ditch?
Saunders right at the ditch, that's water line.
Okay.
Yep, that's where...
I keep getting asked if it's fiber, and I didn't know a good answer. I said, well, it's city staff.
We will be coming down the edge of 34 and Platte Avenue with fiber here shortly. But what we did down Saunders was strictly a water line. That was one of the water line loops that Eric did. And so, we've connected from where we ended there at the end of the Green Acres addition, down Saunders, underneath 34. And right now, boones are out in that field connecting back to the 14-inch water line that serves the industrial park. So we're creating a loop, and then we're also putting in infrastructure for Center Point all at the same time.
Perfect.
So.
One update from the police department.
We started yesterday our youth police academy. We have 12 teenagers from Fort Morgan there, and that'll run through Friday. And we're excited for our first one going pretty well. We're hoping to grow those numbers in the future.
Very good.
That's it.
Bits, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. There's only one bid out now, and that is for disposal of surplus city property consisting of a Mack fire truck. And bids on that will be accepted until June 23 at 3:00 p.m. Under meetings today through Friday, the Colorado Municipal League Conference in Breckenridge, many of council members will be attending that. On June 22 at 4:00 p.m., the Museum Heritage Foundation will meet at the museum community room. And on June 26 at 4:30 p.m., the planning commission will meet at City Hall. All city offices will be closed on July 4 for the Independence Day holiday. And as a result, the next city council regular meeting will be on Wednesday, July 5 at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall.
No other business before council? Meetings adjourned.